Mayor Martin, it's Marcy. I just wanted to let you know that the video is now live streaming and ready to go when you are.
Thank you, Marcy. I'm just gonna wait till it's 6:29, so I'm just gonna give it one more minute. Marcy, can you tell me, do I have any public who have registered to speak this evening?
There is no public registered to speak, and there was one submission that has been attached to the agenda and forwarded to all of you.
Great, thank you. Okay, it is 6:30, so I am going to do a call to order. So first of all, I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Coast Salish people. This is the Monday, October 26th, regular council meeting at 6:30 PM. I'm going to do a quick roll call, so if you could all please unmute and moment. Yeah, so Parkinson.
I'm present.
Thank you, Councilor Jansen.
Present.
Thank you, Councilor Day.
Present.
Thank you, Councilor Kobiyashi.
Present.
Thank you, Councilor Logan.
Present.
Thank you, and Councilor Baxter. Thank you. The first, number two, moving on, which is the release of in-camera resolutions. There are two in-camera resolutions that are being released this evening. My apologies to council, but I'm gonna read out the whole motions that are being released. The first is that the appointment of Brent Moller as approving officer for the city of Callwood be rescinded effective October 26, 2020, and that the appointment of Ian Howitt as alternate approving officer for the city of Callwood be rescinded effective October 26, 2020, and that the appointment of Ian Borhill as alternate approving officer for the city of Callwood be rescinded effective October 26, 2020, and that Ms. Carrie Clark be appointed as the approving officer for the city of Callwood effective October 26, 2020, and authorized to perform the full duties of the approving officer position, and indemnified against any and all claims or damages arising out of the performance of the duties as approving officer, and in addition, the city shall pay legal costs incurred in a court proceeding arising out of any such claim, and further, that Mr. Brent Moller be appointed as the deputy approving officer for the city of Callwood effective October 26, 2020, and authorized to perform the full duties of the approving officer position in the absence of Mrs. Carrie Clark, and indemnified against any and all claims for damages arising out of the performance of the duties as approving officer, and in addition, the city shall pay legal costs incurred in a court proceedings arising out of any such claim. That is the first motion to be released, and that the second motion released this evening is that the appointment of Selena Williams as our corporate officer for the city of Callwood be rescinded effective October 31, 2020. Moving on, three, approval of the agenda. May I get a mover and seconder for the near-term, long-term, and regular council meeting agenda for October 26? I have Councilor Logan moving it. Councilor Parkinson has seconded it.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
My apologies, I was trying to find my hand up and I don't see it. Can I get the can I get the agenda adopted as amended to replace Schedule A of the Financial Plan Amendment bylaw, 1818-01, please?
Thank you, yeah, so thank you for catching that, Ms. Williams. So that is so amended by Councilor Logan and seconded by Councilor Kobiyashi. Discussion on the amended agenda. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your virtual hands. No one opposes. Moving on to four, public participation. As we all heard, there are no one registered to speak this evening. However, there was a correspondence that we all are in receipt of from the Royal Bay Homeowners Association. Moving on to five, mayor's message. I have no mayor's message this evening. Looking to adoption, receipt of minutes, so regular council meeting minutes of October 13. Moved by Councilor Kobiyashi, seconded by Councilor Jansen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your virtual hands. Nobody opposes. Moving on to 6.2, committee of the whole meeting minutes of October 5. Looking for a mover and seconder to receive, please. Moved by Councilor Kobiyashi, seconded by Councilor Logan. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your virtual hands. Nobody opposes. Moving on to delegations, I believe we do have Jeremy Love Day here. He is a CRD director and a victory count. And James Lamb, who is the manager of the CRD Arts and Culture, to do a CRD Arts and Culture overview. Jeremy, may I leave it with you? Or I'm not sure who's doing it.
Yes, hello. All right, yes, so thank you so much. I'm just gonna get my, can I share my screen?
Absolutely.
Perfect. All right, well, thank you so much, Mayor and council for the invitation today. It's my honor to be here and to share with you as Chair of the CRD Arts Commission, a little bit about what we do and what we offer participants and the residents of Callwood and the CRD. And I want to start by acknowledging that we're gathered on the lands of the Coast Salish people, including the Kasepsun, La Quongan, Chanu, and Sauk peoples. So the regional arts funding began in 2001. At that point, we had four participant municipalities, and we're now up to nine municipalities, including newly joined municipalities, Suk and Sanich Gulf Islands, who even though they just recently joined are already seeing the benefits of doing so. So what do we do? Well, the main thing we do is we invest money, so in arts organizations. Last year, we distributed $2.4 million into 94 arts organizations, which call participating jurisdictions home. And on that point, I think it is important to note that only organizations that have a home within participant jurisdictions can apply for or receive funding. So if Callwood did join, then your arts organizations that call Callwood home would be able to apply and receive funds. So the arts, I'm sure you're all well aware of the intangible benefits of arts and culture, but it also has a very big economic impact and is a key economic driver in our region. $7.9 billion in B.C. is the GDP of arts and culture annually, and our region accounts for 8.6% of that. A brief rundown of the grants that we distribute. We have operating grants, which generally go to established arts organizations and provide predictable year-round funding, which is key to their success. We also have project grants, so this supports one-time projects or series. You might think of a festival, a music series, an art fair in a park. Those types of projects can all receive project grants. And we have equity grants. This is a newer grant, which seeks to break down barriers by giving direct funding to organizations who may have faced systemic barriers to receiving funding in the past. We have incubator grants, and this goes to small arts organizations to help them build their internal capacity of their organization. And maybe in the future, through that, they would be eligible for the operating grants. We also have idea grants. So you might imagine a senior center that isn't an arts organization, but they wanted to engage their community members through the arts. And so a nonprofit that isn't arts-focused could apply for an idea grant to put on an arts event. I also encourage you to check this out. We have a map of public art throughout the region of art that's in participating jurisdictions. And it's great for walking tours or biking or driving, however you get around. So the hard numbers, what is the impact? We have, we helped support last year 3,357 events, created 3,564 jobs, convened 644,000 attendees, and 5,395 volunteers for arts events across the region. And if you're into data, there's a lot more in the progress report, which I believe was attached to your agenda. And it's very clear that a lot of these people who benefit would live in Callwood. So other benefits, improving quality of life, enhancing well-being, of course, the employment and volunteers, economic development, as well as, I believe it expands on the profile of our region and community identity, which we are known as a cultural region. So in conclusion, COVID-19 has been hard on all of us. It's been challenging times. And if you are anything like me and many of the people I know, you may have turned to arts and culture for comfort during these challenging times. Maybe that was a Netflix show, or maybe it was watching one of the many local events that have moved online and watching it on Facebook. And I think it's clear how important arts and culture is to everyone in our region, and that we are stronger together, and I'm hoping that Callwood will consider joining and looking at the other materials that were provided to get more of a background if you need it. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have, as well as James Lamb, who's the manager, who knows a lot more of the ins and outs that I might not be able to answer. So thank you so much for having me, and I appreciate the time to present.
Thank you so much. What I will do then is I will look to council first. Council, do you have any questions? At all? I'm not seeing any. So Jeremy, can you just sort of help me? Have you done any math on this? If, for example, the city of Callwood was to join this program through the CRD, I realize, is it based on population? How's the requisition determined?
Maybe I'll go to James on that one. James Lamb is probably a little more familiar with the numbers by municipality.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Yeah, there's a formula that's contained in the bylaw that establishes the service. It's based 50% on population and 50% on converted assessments. For the information of your counselors, there's two ways to participate in the service. There's full participation, which is based on 100% of that formula. And you can also participate as what's known as a group two participant, which is 30% of your group one level. I'll tell you, we did an estimate in our finance department, and 30% based on 2020 requisition and population would be about $46,000.
Okay, thank you. I have two counselors wishing to ask questions, so I'll go first to Councilor Kobiyashi.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, through the chair to Jeremy. Jeremy, could you just tell me how the funds are distributed? So that it's on an equitable, is it done on an equitable basis, based on what we contribute, or how is that done exactly?
So the grants are adjudicated through an advisory committee. It's called the AAC, is what we call them, and they are volunteers who are generally very familiar with the arts or have a history in the arts, who adjudicate the grants. Based on merit, there is a desire from the Arts Commission to see the regional distribution be fair. And then, but there's also the recognition that some of the larger arts organizations may be in the core, and that they may at this point receive an outsized amount of funding because of the operating funding. So larger organizations tend to receive the operating funds. But if you look at the new municipalities to have joined Suk and Sanich Gulf Islands, they, organizations in their jurisdictions received funding in the first year that they joined, and they were automatically seeing a return on that investment.
Okay, thank you. And second question, and maybe it's to, through the chair, to staff. I don't know when this fund actually started up, but I was wondering if there was some history, why we didn't join in the first place? Is there a reason? Is it because we put our money into the West Shore Arts and Culture Council there? Or, does anyone have any history for me to understand that?
Through the chair, I can provide you a bit of an answer to that. Partly, it's historical. The regional funding wasn't centralized prior to 2001. Only the four core municipalities contributed to regional arts funding. When it came to the CRD in 2001, the CRD did much of what we're doing this evening. We went out to all the municipalities and asked them if they cared to participate. And at that time, because we're a sub-regional service, a voluntary service, some volunteered to join the service and some opted not to at that time. I assume, obviously, Callwood did not. And over a period of time, over the last 18, 19 years or so, we have gone out to the various jurisdictions to tell them about the benefit of participating and give them an opportunity. And that's, as Jeremy mentioned at the outset, we started with four and we're at nine now. So it's part of an ongoing process.
Okay, thank you very much, James. And last question, quickly here. As far as the people that oversee the distribution of the funds, who's exactly on that? Is that a member from each municipality that participates? Is that how it works, or representative?
Yes, so Jeremy, love to hear. Each participating jurisdiction gets an appointee to the Arts Commission, which is what I am currently the chair of, and that the Arts Commission makes the policy decisions and ultimately votes on all the grants. We don't adjudicate them because we may be politicians without the expertise in the arts. So we have the Arts Advisory Committee that adjudicates, but we do approve all of the grants, and all participating jurisdictions have a member on that commission.
And just part of that, then, Jeremy, is it a weighted sort of thing by municipality? Like, is it like the CRD votes? Is it like that, or is it?
No, it's just, yeah, one member, one vote.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeremy.
Thank you. Councilor Jansen.
Thank you, Your Worship. We have some robust arts groups in the West Shore with whom we connect with on a quasi-regular basis at council. It's like, maybe someone can explain to me sort of the net benefit of us tossing money at the CRD to manage on our behalf versus us connecting with our own groups here in the West Shore.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead, Jeremy.
Sorry, yeah, through the mayor. I think there's two parts to that. One is the fact that the organizations would immediately be eligible for all five levels, all five of these different grants, that can provide funding depending on where they're at as an organization. If you have the larger organizations that are established, after a year or two, they may be eligible for the operating grants, which are often quite significant. For project grants, that could go to more emerging arts organizations that you may not be funding currently. And it also allows the adjudication to be centralized and fair through an advisory committee. I see, personally, I see benefit for municipalities to do both. That's what a number of municipalities do. And at this point, I see the trend towards more and more municipalities joining the Arts Commission because they do see the benefit for their local arts organizations, and they want to be a part of supporting the regional arts ecosystem and acknowledging that, you know, Callwood residents do go to arts events in other jurisdictions that would receive the funding and volunteer at those events, and many would also be employed there.
Anything else, Councilor Jansen?
Thanks, that's that's interesting, thank you. And I mean, my personal take on this is the bigger doesn't necessarily mean better. And my worry is that oftentimes, we see smaller jurisdictions getting steamrolled within the larger CRD context. That's purely anecdotal, and I don't expect a response, but that's my thought. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands, so I am just gonna thank you guys for attending this evening and very much appreciate the presentation.
Thank you very much for having me and James Lamb and for the invitation. And just last word, that the intent is definitely not to steamroll smaller municipalities. We're doing this outreach because we want to be of service to those, to all municipalities of all sizes throughout the region. And I think there is a real desire on behalf of the Arts Commission, and I think you'll see that in our strategic plan and the Arts Progress Report that are attached to the agenda that lay out the data that shows we're committed to providing a valuable service to all municipalities that decide to join. And so just thank you so much for having us today.
Yeah, thank you. And Jeremy, please, you know, we, Callwood may not belong to the CRD Arts and Culture, but we do appreciate the work that you guys are doing. So thank you on behalf of all of council.
Thank you.
Moving on to 8.1, this is new business now. This is the Fleet Management Policy, Public Works and General Staff Vehicles. This is the recommendation that came from the October 5, 2020, Committee of the Whole Meeting. You do have a recommendation in front of you. Do I have a mover? So Councilor Logan is moving the staff recommendation that is in the agenda, and Councilor Parkinson is seconding it. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your hands. Nobody opposes. Moving on to 8.2, this is the tax policy. This is again recommended from the October 5 Committee of the Whole Meeting, that the tax guidance policy be approved. That is moved by Councilor Jansen. May I have a second, or please? Seconded by Councilor Logan. Discussion. Councilor Day then Parkinson.
Thank you. I just noticed under the sustainable infrastructure and replacement policies, the first bullet talks about the incremental operating costs from development being paid for with the new construction tax revenue.
Sorry, Councilor Day, can I interrupt just for a minute? Could you tell council what page you're looking at, so that we can all look at it at the same time?
Sure, I'm looking at page 72.
Thank you.
And no problem. The last bullet under 4.0 says promote intergenerational equity by working to ensure that each generation pays similar amounts for similar capital services. So I'm just wondering, over time, legislation changes and requirements change, and generally speaking, costs have been increasing over time. So there may be considerable gaps between what it costs for sewer services in the future versus what it costs now. And I'm just wondering how those gaps will be quantified to meet this goal of intergenerational equity.
I will leave that to staff, whoever wishes to answer. Now, unfortunately, we have a new acting CFO presently, so she may not be able, I'm not even sure if she's on the line, to be honest. I'm just looking. Oh, yeah, Mr. Earl, do you want to comment?
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Certainly, the intent of 4.0, the fifth bullet, to promote intergenerational equity by working to ensure that each generation pays similar amounts for similar capital services. The notion of that phrase was meant to be inflation-adjusted. And what we're trying to get at with this policy advice is that we don't kind of overtax one group of users and then kind of turn that off at some future state and not tax a future group and/or the reverse. And so absolutely, inflation increases the cost of all things, both operating and capital. And the intent of this bullet is intended to be inflation-adjusted, similar amounts for similar capital services.
Thank you. And I saw that Ms. Hepting lowered her hand. Did you have anything else to add to that?
Not
Oh, there you are. Go ahead.
In part, just to add that this, you know, there's a number of policy tactics to consider, and these get reviewed and discussed through each annual financial planning process.
Thank you. Councilor Day.
Thank you.
Okay, then Councilor Parkinson.
Thank you. Jen Hepting actually answered. Most of my concerns is that these are items that will be reviewed annually, so that they're not set in stone. I notice on, under property tax revenue policies, we're now targeting business tax ratios plus or minus 10%. The same with others. I'm not sure that that's actually where we landed as a council initially, but we did talk about an incremental program, so we've got lots of time to hone in on where we exactly want to be there. So the fact that we look at these annually will let us make the most informed possible decisions. And the other one, on the same vein, and this goes back to where Cynthia was under 4.0, where one of the bullets says the budget for debt servicing payments will be converted into sustainable infrastructure replacement funding as debt retires. And I'm sure you'll all recall the discussion we had as the sewer debt came up, when one of the sewer areas, were we going to keep charging that and put it into a fund, or were we going to wait till more people hooked up and they could share the costs? And we had quite the discussion, but at the end, we didn't follow this policy. Not to say we shouldn't or couldn't in the future, but so, again, I think with the understanding that these are where we're at today for discussion and review annually, I'm happy with this as it stands.
I'm not seeing any other hands, so I'm gonna call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your hands. Nobody opposes. Moving on to 8.3, this is payment in lieu of taxes, regional benchmarking. Again, this is a recommendation from the October 5 Committee of the Whole Meeting, and the recommendation being that staff provide council maps that include pilt parcel locations and ownership. May I have a mover and seconder, please? It is moved by Councilor Parkinson, seconded by Councilor Day. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your virtual hands. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your virtual hands. Nobody opposes. Moving on to eight point four, this is the Royal Beach Parks Terms of Reference. This again is a recommendation from the October nineteenth Committee of the Whole meeting. The recommendation is there. It is moved by Counselor Logan. Do I have a second or please? Seconded by Counselor Kobayashi. Discussion. Counselor Day.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I will have to oppose this. I I am very concerned with not knowing the specific details of where the beachfront path is going to be, whether or not we are creating additional risk for the future with a hard surface if it's very close to the ocean. So I'm just worried that we're going to put ourselves in a position in the future where we have a lot of risk and obligations for the municipality. So I cannot support this going forward with the current information.
All right, thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands, so I will call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your virtual hands. Counselor Day opposes. Moving on to eight point five, this is the Royal Beach Road Design Standards. We do have a recommendation that's this is recommended again from the October nineteenth Committee of the Whole meeting. And the recommendation is there. This is moved by Counselor Baxter, seconded by Counselor Parkinson. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your hands. Nobody opposes. Moving on to eight point six, this is the Royal Beach Bylaw Amendment. Amendments with an S. This is recommendations from the October nineteenth Committee of the Whole meeting. The recommendations are there. Moved by Counselor Logan. They have a second or please? Seconded by Counselor Kobayashi. Discussion. Counselor Day.
Unfortunately, again, I have to oppose this. It seems like we are approving additional units in the area where we haven't adequately forecasted the cost to service those units. And for that reason, I will be opposing.
Seeing no other hands, I'll call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your virtual hands, please. Counselor Day opposes. So that takes us to eight point seven. This is Jill Collinson, our senior planner regarding local government comment on non-medical cannabis license. Two oh two three ten Whale Road. There is a recommendation. This is, do staff wish to comment on this before I look for a mover?
Through Mayor Martin, this is Brent Muller speaking on behalf of Jill Collinson. There's nothing for you to speak to, but I am here to ask questions. This is important resolution so that the application could proceed to the next step, which is with the province. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. So I have, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe I have a mover and second or Counselor Day is moving it. Counselor Baxter is seconding it. Is that correct or we're?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to clear everybody's hands then. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your hands. Nobody opposes. Moving on to eight point eight, this is Selena Williams, our Director of Corporate Services. This is in regard to twenty twenty-one meeting schedule. And you do see a recommendation there. So I have Counselor Baxter moving it. Counselor Day has seconded it. Lower the discussion. Counselor Jansen.
Thank you, worship. I know we have flogged this a little bit and we did come up with the six thirty meeting start times. I don't know if you recall or not that I dissented in that and I thought maybe six o'clock was a good, happy medium, thereby allowing the public and ourselves to finish dinner and get online or get down to City Hall, what have you. And the added benefit was that I would prefer to come half an hour early than to vote to go past ten P M. It gives us that built-in extra, I guess, extra total hour. If you include the six thirty starts that we've been doing. I think that has worked and that's my two cents. I would offer suggested amendment that we consider six P M starts. But I'll leave that with you, your worship.
Hey, great, thank you. I'm going to assume that you are actually making that as a motion, Counselor Jansen, to amend this to go to a six P M and I'll look for a second or and then we can have a discussion about it. Is that true? Is that correct or am I incorrect?
Why don't we tell you what, I'll let's await a little bit of feedback from my peers and then maybe we'll get to that. How about that?
Okay, so he is not making a motion. Is there any other discussion in regards? I'm seeing Counselor Kobayashi.
I'd love to support John on Counselor Jansen, but unfortunately, six thirty is pushing it for me. When I signed up, it was seven. Six thirty is good. Six o'clock, I'm going to be late.
Your nap time, I understand.
Yes, I'm getting old. I'm senior citizen here, so.
Counselor Logan.
Thank you, worship. I actually do support the six o'clock amendment, both for the reasons that Counselor Jansen had proposed. And also, we have to realize that staff, this has an impact on staff as well. So quite often, they are still sticking around City Hall working until meeting time. And it's important that they, we get out early enough and let them get on with their evenings as well. So I think I think six is a reasonable time, frankly.
Thank you. I'll throw my two bits in as well. I also am supportive of six P M. I don't buy the policy or the premise that this limits public. We started at six thirty and we had nobody from the public join us this evening, so I don't. And the fact that all of these are now being archived and that, and I know for a fact there are more people who watch this the next day than actually watch it live. And so I'm very much supportive of moving it forward. I think we need to be very conscious of burning the staff out. We are, we are, we are working these people to the nth degree. We are busier than we have ever been as a municipality. I know staff are working long, long hours. And to not be helping and facilitating a little bit of that and starting a little bit earlier so that people can actually get home to their families, I don't see, I don't see any harm. I also look at jurisdictions around us. Langford starts at five thirty. Victoria actually starts during the day for a lot of their meetings. And I believe even View Royal has an afternoon Tuesday meeting. So it's, I do not think we're offside by starting at six, but obviously it would be to the majority of where everybody else sees. Counselor Jansen has his hand up again, but I actually, before I go to you, Counselor Jansen, I'm going to allow others people to speak. If there's anyone else who wants to add anything before I go back to you. Counselor Dave and Parkinson.
Thanks. I find it very hard to be here earlier. And you know, it is how the city has operated. I have heard on many occasions from residents who found it very difficult and to be here earlier. I realize there's some differences now that we're doing Zoom meetings. But I still feel that, you know, what I signed up for was a seven o'clock meeting. Except we tried to make it earlier for Committee of the Whole because we all tend to talk too much. So I'm trying to say less and do more and be effective at our meetings. And I'd like to make sure that if somebody wants to to talk to us or be a part of the meeting, that they have that opportunity.
Counselor Parkinson.
That was a tough one. You know, I sympathize. I frankly am somewhat ambivalent about the starting times. I could do either. I look at today's schedule and starting this meeting half an hour earlier would have backed up other meetings and would have had me scarfing down a little bit to eat in a very few short minutes. So I think on this one, I'm going to side with with my friend, my friends Doug and Cynthia and not my friends Gordy and Dean. And I'm going to, and I'm going to leave it up to, I'll put all the pressure on Michael Baxter here.
Counselor Baxter, do you wish to speak to it before I go back to you? Oh yeah, you've got your hand up, Baxter.
The only thing I want to say is I'm retired. I can start whenever you like.
Okay, Counselor Jansen, I'll come back to you. Counselor Jansen?
Oh, you meant like right now? Okay, sorry. The only other flying ointment that strikes me as well is these committee afternoons, so I take your point, Stuart. And I hear what everybody's saying. I mean, sorry, the other added thought is in camera time. I would hate to think if we move the start time by half an hour that we need to then schedule, you know, in camera time on the Wednesday or what have you. So again, it might work in certain circumstances, but I see that it might not as well. Gord, I'm on the fence. I'm not going to make a motion as of yet. How about you? What's your thoughts?
Well, presently, presently, that's not how we're running this meeting. Presently, I have a motion. And unless somebody is making a amendment to that motion, I'm going to call the question. I'm not seeing any other hands up presently, and I will give it one more chance. Does anybody wish to raise their hand and make an amendment to this motion? Seeing none, I will call the question. This, so I want to be clear just to everybody so that there's no confusion. We are not looking at a six P M discussion right now on the recommendation. The recommendation would be that the twenty twenty-one meeting schedule be adopted as presented, which is a six thirty start. Call the question. Those in opposition? Counselor Martin is the only one who, Counselor Martin and Counselor Jansen opposed. Okay, moving on to eight point nine. This is our fire chief in regards to the asset disposal of engine fifty. You will see in the recommendations, there are three options and I will Chief, do you wish to speak to it? Chief Cassidy? I'm sorry, actually, hold on. Actually, I see, I already have a mover and second or so. Counselor Parkinson, did you wish to make a motion? Or is that from the last?
I would, no, I would move option three, that the engine fifty-one be sold to the Callwood Firefighters Association for the sum of ten thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. And I have, I have three other people with their hands up. I'm going to lower them all. Does anybody wish to second that one? So that seconded is Counselor Logan. So that is option three, the fire engine number fifty-one be sold to the Callwood Firefighters Association for the sum of ten thousand dollars. Discussion. Counselor Logan.
Thank you, worship. I'd actually like to make an amendment that the that it be sold to the association for the sum of one dollar and I'd be happy to motivate.
Okay, I will look for a second or first. It does not look like, oh, you do have a second or Counselor Jansen? So I'll come back to you, Counselor Logan.
Thank you, worship. We, I won't get into the value that the firefighters bring to the municipality. I think that's, we're pretty well versed on that value. But my understanding is that this truck is going to be used for good, going to be used for raising money for organizations. And I think this is a small contribution that the city could make to the Firefighters Association that can assist them to do that very good work over and above the time that they put in when they show up to our house at two o'clock in the morning to put out a fire or pick up our father or mother. So I think a dollar is ample.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Day.
Thank you. I didn't realize that they had a plan. In fact, I was going to ask if they actually wanted the fire engine. But I certainly support the motion that's been put forward. I do agree that there's probably lots of good things that they will do with the fire truck. And it's really a drop in the bucket compared to the cost of the firefighting equipment that we need to keep our city safe. So I support the motion.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any of their hands, so I'll, I wish to ask a question through staff. Is Counselor Logan's motion the most appropriate way to deal with this? And what I mean by that is really what we're doing is we're giving a ten thousand dollar grant to the Callwood Firefighters Association because we're now no longer asking for them to pay for this. Would it be better for them to pay the ten thousand dollars and then during the budget process rebate that back to them? Or is it more appropriate to be doing what's before us this evening of the one dollar?
On that, your worship, it's John Cassie, the fire chief. As per administration of policy, I'd like to defer to corporate services on that one.
Sure, thank you. And actually, I see Ms. Hemting's hands up, so I will look to her.
Hi there. Yes, I don't see this as a grant. And I certainly see that a one dollar price tag for the disposal of this asset would be more than appropriate. Ultimately, this just means that that's one dollar that the city has to set aside to reserves as opposed to ten thousand dollars under option three.
Right. Okay, well, and then just as a follow-up question to that. I certainly do not oppose this motion and I'm supportive of it. I'm just afraid that we set either a dangerous precedent or that there's an unforeseen consequence that I didn't think about. Do, is there anything out there that should be a flag for us as a council? Before I call the question. And I do see Counselor Kobayashi's hand up too, so I will go to him after staff. So I'm looking for staff comment.
Your worship, so this would, the report is based on amending the disposal policy and requesting direction from council. If council wishes to dispose of the asset for whatever amount they so choose, that would be appropriate by way of amendment to the disposal policy. As for unforeseen flags, it would be a disposal of an asset as in any other case. It would be sold as is, where is, and there would be no legal liabilities inferred after the fact.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kobayashi? Did you wish to comment at all?
Yes, thank you very much, your worship. My question is, what's the difference between this and like it's an asset, right? And I think in terms of our term here, there was something that came up about land and disposal of land. You can't, you have to get the fair market value of land, for example, which is an asset. And in order for you to give that away or discount it, you have to show that you're getting some type of service or product in return for that equal value. That's how I understood it. And I actually found that, I found that phrase in, I think it was municipal act or one of them. And so what's the difference? So you make a very good point, your worship. I think it's better for us to do it, you know. Yes, you make it for ten thousand because if that's the value of it and then you give it back as a grant, you know what I mean, nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine sort of thing. I think that's probably a better way to do it. That's just my input on it.
I do see Mr. Earl's hand up. Uh, I, I do see Mr. Earl's hand up. Uh, Mr. Earl.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Martin. You know, at the end of the day, if uh, councils desire us to dis- dispose of this or any other asset to a nonprofit organization, um, there may be benefit to having a, a, a policy to uh, guide this or future councils to ensure fairness to all other such non-fa- nonprofit groups, uh, but there is no substantive risk.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselors, uh, Counsel Jansen.
Uh, thank you, worship. Uh, the only other thought I had is um, I mean, I, I, I'm assuming they're a registered charity and we're not gonna put them into a tax pickle or anything like that, or anything unforeseen. I, I think we've probably flogged this enough, but uh, that, those are, that's my uh, question.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, uh, I'm gonna call the question then on the amendment. Uh, and the amendment is to reduce uh, to the sum of a dollar uh, for the Callwood uh, Firefighters Association. Those in opposition, please raise your hand. Nobody opposes. Uh, moving on to eight point ten, uh, this is Rachel Buskey. Uh, this is the Economic Recovery Program Coordinator regarding the Economic Recovery Action three point eight, Make Your Place Callwood, Community Placemaking Competition. There is a recommendation there. Uh, do staff wish to comment first?
Hello.
Of order, uh, your worship, do we need to call the main motion?
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Logan, for catching that. Uh, my apologies, Rachel. Uh, so we're, sorry, going back to eight point nine. So the amendment passed, uh, which brings me back to the main motion. Uh, so I'm gonna call the question on the main motion now. Those in opposition, please raise your hands. Uh, Counselor Jansen opposes. Uh, okay, um, now, moving on to eight point ten, Rachel.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this report on placemaking. The city adopted the Economic Recovery Plan on the fifteenth of July, twenty twenty. And one of the actions in the recovery plan is to facilitate a placemaking competition. With a shared focus on community enrichment and functionality, placemaking is a community-led approach that brings people together to plan, design, and manage shared use spaces. In the context of the global COVID nineteen pandemic, the effective use of outdoor spaces has become a priority as we find new ways of interacting with one another in a physically distanced way. The city has set aside five thousand dollars as seed funding for the placemaking competition and proposes one seed fund- funding grant of three thousand dollars and two grants of a thousand dollars each. To maximize benefit through the community, staff would like to be flexible in the award of seed funding so that excellent projects smaller than three thousand and one thousand can be considered for a funding award. City staff have developed a funding policy for this competition provided as an attachment to this report. This policy closely follows the city of Victoria's placemaking grant policy, seeking proposals for both placemaking projects and projects that support community recovery and resilience in the context of COVID nineteen. The city asks that applicants match the seed funding award with equivalent volunteer labor, donated services, donated materials and supplies, or other funds raised. We hope to receive grant funding applications for things like street infrastructure, talking circle spaces, seed libraries, boulevard or pollinate, pollinator gardening, decorative lighting displays or street murals. If council directs staff to proceed with this initiative, the city could begin promoting the placemaking competition during November twenty twenty and will invite applicants to be, to submit before the end of January twenty twenty-one in anticipation that the competition could be assessed and awarded in February twenty twenty-one and for projects to begin implementation during the spring of twenty twenty-one. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this information to you, and this concludes my presentation.
Uh, Rob, I think you're muted, buddy. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I was muted. Counsel Baxter, did you wish to make a motion? Or did you?
I do.
Go ahead.
Move the recommendation. Um, I think uh, I've visited other places that have done some placemaking and uh, I think it improves people's quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a second or to that? Uh, I will second it to uh, to move this along. Uh, discussion. Uh, Counselor Day, did you wish to discuss?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'm just concerned. I love the idea. I think it's great. Uh, but it doesn't address the issue, at least that I noticed. Um, because the shared spaces are most likely to be city property. Uh, so, does this include an approval process where the management uh, post beautification is looked after? I mean, people may take an interest in looking after it for a while and then lose interest. So I just wanted it not to be too loose that the city would end up with maybe some problems down the road.
Hello, good evening, Counselor Day. Um, as part of the um, policy that we've drafted for this project, um, we've asked that applicants consider how that they will, how they will remove the project at the end of the term. Um, and um, we're asking for the projects to be live in essence for a, about one year.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands, uh, so I'm gonna call the question. Uh, those in opposition, please raise your hands. Nobody opposes. Uh, moving on to eight point eleven, uh, this is John Russell, uh, Public Works Service Coordinator uh, regarding the growing rabbit population in Royal Bay. Um, there is a recommendation that um, that we receive this for information and provide any other guidance uh, to staff. Uh, Counselor Day.
Thank you. I'll move the recommendation to receive the report, but I would like to and address just two points. One is that the feral rabbits described in the report are native rabbits. They are, we have had significant populations in the pa- past of domestic rabbits that have been dropped off in the area. That is not what these are. These are native cotton-tail rabbits.
Counsel Day, I'm just gonna interrupt. Um, just because I'm looking for a motion right now and then I'll come back to you to motivate.
Sorry, I'm looking for a question to be answered and I have made the motion that we received the report.
And that's, so that's all that you're asking for? That, that's, that's the only motion? Okay, thank, okay, so so to be clear, that the, uh, the recommendation is that only that the briefing uh, be received and no other direction. And now Counsel Day has a question and go ahead. Uh, thank you, Counsel Day.
Thank you. Um, do we need a second or before I ask my question?
Uh, yeah, please. And I, I, I will clear some hands. Do I have a second or just to receive the report? Uh, Counsel Jansen, thank you. And then back to Counsel Day.
Sorry, so I'm, I guess I, I just need to, to confirm that it is understood that these are a native species uh, to the area.
Thank you, Counsel Day. Um, I, I appreciate what you said and uh, if we are asked to investigate this further, staff will look into exactly what type of rabbits are in the area, the different types, that sort of thing, and that will be provided at a later report.
Great, thank you. Um, and so I think that we may, and I don't have any specific knowledge, but except many, many years of watching these rabbit populations and uh, they have been um, exploding of late, uh, exactly as detailed in the report because life is good right now for them. Uh, but they may also level out and there will be a significant um, negative perception, I think, if we try to get into the rabbit control group. I mean, we've seen it all at University of Victoria and, and the General Hospital. So I just think, uh, I would like to hear from everybody else if they want to uh, spend staff time now on looking at options uh, to deal with the, the, the issue, or if they want to wait a little while and see if perhaps over the winter uh, things change quite a bit. Uh, because my experience has been that they kind of go in waves and winter is their hardest time and it may change uh, next year.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Counsel Baxter. Uh, Counsel Baxter, unmute.
That's the third time. Um, according to the report, the Conservation Service said specifically, uh, domestic rabbits and eastern cotton tails that are found on Vancouver Island are non-native species and listed here, the other, meaning they can be captured or killed at any time. And I'm quite certain the consi- conversation, uh, Conservation Service would not have said that if there was any danger that we were looking at um, uh, native rabbits. But I also have a question. This motion, the motion is simply to receive?
Correct.
Okay, I'd like to propose an amendment that we ask uh, staff to, to come back with a report on possible methods of control. Um, but they, they not prioritize it over uh, other more urgent stuff.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna clear hands. Uh, I've got the list of the, to the primary. Uh, do I have a second or to that motion? Uh, Counsel Logan, um, is seconding it. Uh, Ca- Counselor uh, Baxter, do you wish to make any other comments in regards to the amendment?
Um, yes, I, I would just like to say that um, as explained in the, in report, I believe, the um, the food for the rabbits has just exploded and it will continue increasing. Um, and given the number of uh, cycles of birth the rabbits can go through, um, I, I don't foresee any diminution in the uh, numbers um, without some intervention. And um, therefore, I think, uh, I think we need to at least be informed on what is possible and what the uh, consequences might be.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counsel Logan, on the amendment?
Yes, thank you, uh, your worship, on the amendment. This is certainly becoming a hot topic in the neighborhood, uh, as the rabbits um, forge ahead and damage uh, uh, some of the, the uh, homes that have been built, uh, and the landscaping and starting to burrow under homes. We just have to remember the damage that uh, rabbits have done at Uvic, uh, to V G H and at the T C H. Um, and we need to get out ahead of this before it becomes uh, to, at such a state that, I mean, we're, we're overrun. I mean, it's getting to that point now. But um, I have seen a, a steady increase over the last few years and uh, Mayor Martin and I a few months back walked through the gravel pit, uh, Victoria South and we're pretty near tripping over them. Uh, they're all over the place. It, it was incredible. Um, we are seeing them in Callwood Creek Park as well. Uh, but certainly, uh, Royal Bay is, is the, the um, hotspot and there simply are not enough natural predators to, to take care of the problem. Um, so, so I, I, I would be interested in options, so uh, so we can get out ahead of this and, and address some of the issues that the residents have had. Uh, and address some of the issues that the city is having to repair uh, as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any of their hands, so I'm gonna go back to Counsel Baxter. Counsel Baxter, can you, um, just give me your motion one more time for me, please?
Uh, an amendment that says that uh, we ask staff to report back on methods of control of the rabbits. Um, I think I said, and their consequences. And uh, that staff not prioritize this other mo- over more, uh, other more urgent work.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counsel Parkinson. Uh, on the amendment, I, I've got a list of Baxter, Logan and Parkinson on the main motion, but uh, this is on the amendment, Counsel Parkinson?
Okay, well, maybe I'll hang on. I was gonna speak, I guess, mostly to the main motion, so I'll, I'll wait.
Okay.
No, excuse me, I should speak now.
Okay.
Because what I, because I'm, I, I was happy with the main motion to receive the report. I'm troubled by uh, by going further than that at this point. Um, not that I'm saying it could never happen, but my experience from living, uh, living down here by the lagoon over the last eight or ten years is that rabbit populations haven't uh, taken off exponentially. There's certainly been rabbits, there are still rabbits, but they do seem to have stabilized. Uh, I watched the same with uh, my kid's place out in Michozen, some rabbits. Um, but don't seem to be um, overdoing it. So I'm, I'm sort of a wait and see guy. Let's uh, uh, let's, let's wait, see if this thing can um, control itself by natural means and uh, and uh, and keep our powder dry, not to say that at some point it won't be necessary to do something.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Baxter.
Yeah, I just wanna speak to that. There's a huge difference between Royal Bay and uh, any of the other places mentioned. That is the lack of large trees. Um, the predators need large trees uh, both for nesting and for roosting and uh, looking for targets. And in the absence of those large trees, um, the owls can't do their work. And uh, you probably, wherever you live and have large trees, you don't see the work that the owls do, cause they do it at night. Um, and uh, the um, I think we need to take positive action, as Counsel Logan said, to get in front of it. Um, we just need to identify the right uh, action, which may be providing um, roosting spots for the owls, or it may be something else. Uh, so that's my response to that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm not seeing any of their hands, so this is just on the amendment, which was to add uh, to direct staff to come back with a future report on methods of control. Um, and it not taking uh, significant time. So on the amendment, uh, I'll call the question. Uh, those in opposition, please raise your hands. Uh, Counselor Parkinson, Counselor Day and Mayor Martin, uh, oppose. Uh, so that motion passes, which brings us back to the main motion. Um, which was to receive the report and uh, to have staff report back on methods of control. Uh, is there any discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Uh, those in opposition, please raise your hands. Nobody opposes. Uh, moving on to bylaws. Uh, this is bylaw nine point one, this is bylaw number eighteen eighteen oh one. Five-year financial plan, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. Uh, bylaw number eighteen twenty, or eighteen eighteen twenty twenty, amendment number one, Schedule A, bylaw number eighteen eighteen oh one. Twenty twenty, first, second and third reading and adoption, is my understanding. Um, actually, uh, Counsel, uh, I will go to our corporate officer, just for a moment. I just wanna confirm, do I need to do two separate readings for first, second, third, and then a second one for adoption, or do I do it all as one?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Martin. The current ministerial order that's in place allows you to give all four readings in one meeting. It is best practice to separate first, second and third from adoption.
Okay, so I'll separate it. Thank you. Uh, so looking for a mover and second or so moved by Counsel Kobiyashi, seconded by Counsel Baxter. This is on first, second and third reading. Uh, of, a discussion. Uh, Counselor Day.
Thank you. I just want to let everyone know that I will be opposing this, as I don't believe that we have quantified the costs that are associated with the development that's being counted. So this is a one-sided balance sheet.
Okay. Uh, seeing no, nobody else, I'll call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your hand. This is for first, second and third reading. Uh, Counsel Day opposes. Uh, moving on to adoption, may have a mover and second or please? Uh, for adoption, moved by Counsel Baxter, seconded by Counsel Kobiyashi, uh, discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your hand. Uh, Counsel Day opposes. Moving on to uh, eight, no, excuse me, nine. Moving on to, uh, eight, no, excuse me, 9.2, this is bylaw number 1787 dash 01, this is the permissive tact exemption. This is for adoption, moved by, uh, councillor Janson, seconded by councillor Parkinson, uh, discussion? Seeing none, oh, excuse me, uh, councillor Baxter, did you wish to discuss?
That was early moving, I, I.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, you know, you're just being keen, I appreciate that, thank you. Uh, so, uh, those in opposition, please raise your hand. Uh, nobody opposes. Moving on to 9.3, this is bylaw number 1134, uh, dash 04. This is a traffic and highway use amendment, recreational vehicle for adoption. Uh, councillor Baxter has moved it, uh, do I have a second or? Seconded by, um, councillor Logan, uh, discussion? I'm just, uh, councillor Day, did you wish to discuss or were you just raising your hand?
Please.
Okay, councillor Day?
Yes. Uh, I will be opposing this as I did at committee. Uh, the amendment is, uh, against recreational vehicles. You can't park right in front of your own house for more than 24 hours. And I think this is a, a poor way to address the problem that we have in Esquimalt Lagoon and other places.
I will, seeing no other hands, I'll call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your hands. Councillor Day opposes. Uh, moving on to 9.4. Um, uh, 9.4, which is the official community plan, Royal Beach Subarea Plan, this is second reading as amended. Uh, moved by councillor Janson, seconded by councillor Logan. Clear hands, discussion. This is for only, this is only for second reading. Uh, seeing no hands, I'll call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your hands. Councillor Day opposes. Uh, moving on to 9.5, this is bylaw number 1837, Land Use Amendment, uh, Comprehensive Development Zone, CD30, Royal Beach, this is second reading as amended. Uh, moved by councillor Logan, seconded by councillor Kobayashi. Uh, discussion? Uh, councillor Day?
Thank you, I'm just wondering what the amendment was?
Staff?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, these, uh, this is Dennis here. Um, these amendments, uh, incorporate uh, the first amendments that were introduced by council, I believe, black, back in August regarding, uh, the heightened building in, I believe, area four and area six. Um, and also the amendments that were, um, considered by council at their last meeting um, regarding the amount of, um, limited amount of floor, the non-residential floor area in areas one and two. So it, it's a culmination of all the amendments that council has already considered.
Thank you.
I will call the question then, seeing no other hands. Uh, this is for second reading. Uh, those in opposition, please raise your hand. Councillor Day opposes. Sorry, I just did 9.5, correct? Yeah, thank you. Uh, 9.6, bylaw number 1841, Land Use Amendment, uh, MUEC1 Zone, Allen Dale Lot B, this is for adoption. Moved by councillor Parkinson, seconded by councillor Logan, uh, discussion? Councillor Baxter?
Um, I have a question for staff about area eight B. Um, I read the bylaw carefully and I can't figure out whether, um, residential use is permitted on the ground floor in eight B or not.
Sorry, three, your worship, um, so are we, uh, referring back to, uh, item 9.5?
No, we're on 9.6, this is Allen Dale, this is bylaw 41.
Ah, okay, my apologies, I, uh...
No, I think Michael's back on 9.5.
Oh, sorry, have I?
What? We already passed that.
I'm, I'm, I was meant to be on the land use by law regarding, um, uh, Royal Beach.
Okay, uh, so we already passed that by law, but, uh, I will, I'm, I'm, although I am happy to allow the, the question to get answered.
Okay, thank you, I'd appreciate it.
Go back to it, but I, I will allow your question to be, to answer.
Thank you.
So, three here, your worship, councillor Baxter, could you just repeat the question, please?
Uh, whether, um, residential use is allowed on the ground floor in area eight B?
No.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so, uh, we are now on, uh, 9.6, which is bylaw number 1841, this is for adoption of Allen Dale Lot B. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. Uh, those in opposition? Councillor Day opposes. Uh, moving on to 9.7, uh, bylaw number 1842, this is Land Use Amendment, MUEC2 Zone, Allen Dale Lot C, this is for adoption. Uh, councillor, this is moved by councillor Janson, seconded by councillor Parkinson, uh, discussion? Seeing no hands up, I, I will call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your hands. Councillor Day opposes. Moving on to 9.8, this is bylaw number 1847, signed by law amendment, MUEC1 and MUEC2, uh, zone, and this is for adoption. Moved by councillor Kobayashi, seconded by councillor Baxter, uh, discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. Those in opposition, please raise your hands. Uh, councillor? Councillor Day opposes. Um, and then adjournment, and I already saw his hands flashed in about 18 times trying to get in there before councillor... But councillor Janson actually won this evening, folks, so, uh, motion to adjourn is moved by councillor Janson this evening. Uh, those in opposition, please raise your hands. Nobody opposes. Good night, everybody.
Night, all.
Good night.